Good evening, everybody. We appreciate you being here tonight and look forward to a good work session. This is the November fourteenth, two thousand twelve work session. Work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on any item. Tonight, we've got five things on our agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will also be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public card will be accepted. I would like to add, though, that if there's a particular topic that there's a little more interest in, I'll be glad to ask the council to extend the time a little bit so everybody has a chance to speak or ask their questions. Are there any public comments?
There are not, sir.
Okay. All right. I'll ask the city clerk to call the first agenda item.
First item is discussion on the Birmingham Road, Hopewell Road intersection improvements. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Good evening, mayor and council. While my monitor comes up here, I'd like to first thank our consultants who are in the audience tonight. Ron Ostelow, Kevin Skinner, and Daniel Stutter to hear from Pond and Associates. They've been putting together this conceptual design for the intersection at Birmingham Road and Hopewell Road and are available if we have any technical questions as we work our way through the presentation. Think it'll come up at all? Is it up on your screens?
It's not.
We have a nice black star at night.
A cow eating or a horse eating grass.
Yeah.
Went back to the barn.
Well, let me give you a little bit of background as they're working on that. This particular project began back in May of this year, and we've worked our way through a boundary and topo survey and have been developing some concept alternatives for intersection improvements at this particular location. Tonight is kind of a culmination of that. We've been holding an online survey to gather some comments from the general public regarding the alternatives that we've put out there and public information meeting that we held earlier tonight prior to this particular meeting. We've gotten a lot of comments, a lot of good comments from people from the online survey. I think we're up to between eighty-five and ninety comments, not including what we've received tonight. So, we've had a lot of feedback on this particular project and a lot of people who are anxious for some type of improvement to begin. What we wanted to do tonight was to come before you and present both that information as well as the two alternatives that we think are, from an operational standpoint, going to work at this particular location and get some feedback from council. We'll take all of that back and we'll develop a preferred alternative from that and come back to council at a future date, once we've had an opportunity to process all that. I should've talked slower.
I tell you, Carter, if you don't mind while we're waiting on the screen to come up, maybe if I could ask you a question that I get asked all the time and I know you can tell the answer better.
And I'll give you a hard copy of that. We'll just start from that after you ask.
Why roundabouts?
Why roundabouts?
Why roundabout? Everybody, you know, most all the improvements are going to roundabouts.
Well, they've kind of become the preferred alternative for a number of different reasons. When you look at it from a safety standpoint, what you tend to have is a lot slower traffic that moves through a roundabout. You've got a lot fewer conflict points. So, when you start looking at a traditional intersection, there's somewhere in the neighborhood of about thirty-two different conflict points where you have the potential for having an accident. When you look at the turn movements, the through movements, all of the different points that you could have a conflict are a potential accident. The roundabouts reduce that number down to about eight. And so, you've got much less conflict. You've got just a different distribution of traffic. You have the potential for some traffic calming. They're not necessarily appropriate in every situation, but it's certainly something that we, as well as the state, look at as design alternatives on any project that we go to. From a safety standpoint also, when you start looking at pedestrians, it's a little bit easier on a pedestrian movement. The pedestrian only has one direction of traffic that they have to cross typically, and any of these will also include splitter islands on the approaches to the intersection or approaches to the roundabout. So, it gives a pedestrian some safe haven before they have to cross the next lane of traffic. They're a little bit more predictable. Traffic's a little bit more predictable. You don't have turn movements coming across the crosswalks. So, from a pedestrian standpoint, it tends to be a little bit safer. And when you start looking at green initiatives, they're a little bit greener. You don't have the idling. You don't have the stops and starts associated with the traffic signal. It is less maintenance. We don't have operators out there at two o'clock in the morning if the signal goes down, storms. We don't have the problem. So, there's a number of different alternatives, and while they're not necessarily appropriate in every condition, we do like to look at them as a design alternative whenever we move through these intersection projects.
Okay. You know, I've used them and they seem to work well, so I'm not pro or con on them. I just, I know that the trend and a lot of people are interested in why we are looking at them.
And I think what we've seen, both locally and nationwide, is that there typically is a lot of resistance to them prior to projects. But in, for the most part, after they're constructed, they tend to function quite well. So, unfortunately for the audience at this point, they won't be able to see this, but I'll start going through the presentation and hopefully we can pick that up once the monitors come back up.
Do you have a comment, Bill, or a question?
Oh, and one additional feature, the closest one to us is in Grimes Bridge and Northcross Street in Roswell. And one of the better features, I think of it, it's a lot more attractive than a conventional intersection. At least you can landscape the interior of the roundabout.
That's true.
And make them quite attractive.
And that particular roundabout was a replacement of a signal that was at that location. So, one of the things that we looked at on this project, we wanted to go back and really kind of define what the purpose of the project was. Any of these projects, really, we try and tie back to the Transportation Master Plan that was approved back in two thousand and nine. And this was really one of the next projects on the list that was identified as a problem issue or a problem intersection by the CTP. Accidents, we looked at the accident history on this particular one. Between two thousand and eight and two thousand and eleven, we had twenty-six accidents at this particular location. A rash since July. We've actually had six accidents since July of this year with seven injuries in those accidents. So, for some reason, we've seen a little bit of a spike. So, probably perfect timing on looking at improvements to this particular location. One of the other things that we looked at is the particular delay at this intersection. Because of the configuration, it's a through movement on Hopewell, as we all know, with a stop condition on Birmingham Highway. We're looking at probably four to six minutes worth of delay on a good day on turn movements because anybody making a left off of Birmingham obviously backs up the queue for anybody trying to make a right movement. So, whatever we do with any of these alternatives to facilitate that movement and make it a little bit smoother tends to be a benefit to the overall project. On the screens we had earlier, we've run some simulations on this intersection with the two alternatives that we think, from an operational standpoint, would work. And so, what you would have seen early on was first, a simulation of the existing conditions. And we generally try to run those just so that we can make sure we're getting a good representation of what's happening out there today. And I think we saw that with Birmingham Road backing up. And we had, we run those conditions both in the morning and the afternoon peak hours. We then ran simulations of the proposed roundabout as well as the signalized intersection just to give you an idea about how those improvements will work and what the distribution of traffic looks like as they move through both of those improvements. When we got down to the accident data, we look back through the CTP. We're probably eighth on the list in number of accidents, and that was the CTP, because done in two thousand and nine, obviously, looked at years two thousand and six to two thousand and eight. We'd had ten injuries at that particular location. When you look back up through the list of intersections that were before this one, they are all currently under design or in some stage of improvement. So, this was really kind of the next one on the list. The accident data, this one on your handout is a little bit difficult to see. It's actually in color on the screen. What we tried to do is look at all of the accidents, was this eight through eleven? In two thousand and eight through two thousand and eleven that we had out there. And this was a little bit of a difficult exercise, but we tried to look at those accidents that we had out there in the past and determine whether or not which alternative may have prevented those types of accidents. And so, in some cases, the roundabout would have prevented it. In some cases, the signal may have prevented it. And in some cases, both alternatives would have prevented it. And in some cases, nothing would have prevented it. Some of the accidents we had out there, particularly on the southbound approach on Hopewell Road due to wet weather or icy conditions, and there's just nothing that would have helped that. That was a little bit of a difficult exercise because you really don't know the chew dynamic of the accident when it happened. But I thought it was good to kind of step through just to get an idea of the history of what had happened out there and a little bit of background on maybe, from an operational standpoint, which alternative could address some of the issues that we've been seeing out there. Obviously, the left-hand turn movement, if you have an accident making a left-hand turn, which is probably the most dangerous accident that you can have coming across those lanes, probably going to be the most severe on a through movement or a signalized movement, isn't going to be helped with a signal, but it would be helped with the roundabout. And so, we were a little bit curious as about what's happened since July out there and trying to determine why we had a little bit of a rash of accidents. We have had six accidents since July, and five of those involved making the left-hand turn. So, that just becomes a very difficult maneuver, whether you're a new driver, an experienced driver. That particular intersection, because of the speeds and the sight distance coming down on that southbound approach, it's just a little bit deceptive on the speed of the vehicles coming down the hill. So, five of those accidents were left-hand turns, and then one was just trying to slow down on that downgrade. So, all of those accidents really kind of attributed to that southbound downgrade and trying to maneuver through that. Three of the drivers were under twenty years old. You know, I don't, I don't know that I can finger that inexperience had anything to do with it, but we did see some of the younger drivers out there. Yes, sir.
Are we implying that those three drivers were turning left? I mean, just.
I think all three of those were.
Because usually, there's two drivers when you have two cars.
Oh, yeah, one coming down the hill. Yeah, right.
Right.
Well, she'll leaf through that.
Okay, just curious.
And then, just a little bit of summary on the injuries that occurred on those left-turn accidents. Some of those, three of those were in one vehicle. And I think you should also have a copy of the comments that we've received online. I think Sarah put a copy up there. So, you should have a copy of the comments that we've received online to date. We're going to continue to take comments through this process until we move into final design, and we took some comments tonight. But in that package, you should also see a letter from a young man who was involved in one of the accidents. Just not going to work? Okay. Okay, so, when we started looking at the distribution of traffic at the intersection, you've got a couple of slides there that look at the morning peak hours. And you can see that the distribution, you know, coming down that southbound approach, you've got thirty-five percent of the cars are going to go through, ten percent of those cars make a right-hand turn. On the eastbound Birmingham, twenty-six percent in the morning make a right-hand turn and fourteen percent make a left-hand turn. I think that was a surprise that it was a high number, but that goes a long way to causing the backup, trying to make that left-hand turn, which really just backs up that twenty-six percent that are going to try and make that right-hand turn. And then, obviously, in the morning, the northbound approach on Hopewell is relatively small volume. We wanted to try and include some of the volumes. These counts were all taken prior to the opening of Cambridge High School. And so, recognizing that Cambridge was going to change the traffic patterns throughout the city a little bit, we tried to address that. We added an estimated additional volume, relatively small volume, probably in the neighborhood of about a hundred additional trips through the intersection, and tried to adjust the distribution a little bit to account for traffic in the morning heading towards Cambridge as opposed to trying to cut across town like they may have in the past, working their way towards Milton High School. So, we did do a little bit of adjustment on those volumes and distributions on that. And then, you can see in the afternoon, it's really kind of the reverse. You start seeing the higher volumes and distributions moving north on Hopewell, and that eastbound movement on Birmingham drops down. So, those next couple of slides, I think I went over earlier. I'll skip those. But to give you an idea, the alternatives that we looked at, obviously, there's always the no build, which is probably not a popular option. But we did look at trying to stage this. We looked at unsignalized with turn lanes, just keeping the configuration as it is, but adding turn lanes, converting the thing to an all-way stop, a traffic signal with turn lanes, a roundabout, and then a continuous green T. If you look on the next page, I've got a picture there to try and give you an idea about what a continuous green T is, but it would give a continuous through movement on the Hopewell northbound while accommodating. I think you just turn it around?
The audience to be able to see one and the council to be able to see the other, if that's possible.
Would you just move it a little bit? I think we can see it. Yeah, maybe you can put it, Dave, maybe you can put it to where the public can see it and us. As long as you can see the audio. Okay.
And what we'll do also then is go ahead and put this presentation online. MiltonIntersectionProjects.com is where we manage all of our intersections. So, anybody in the public that wants to see this presentation, it'll be available to them online. You can shut the simulations off and put the presentation on? Do you want me to start again? Sorry. Oh, let, I'll go back to this one. So, the colors are a little bit skewed, but the red was to indicate those accidents which we thought would be preventable from a signalized intersection. There's a light green that would represent those accidents that would probably be preventable from a roundabout. And then, it's actually yellow, but it's that dark green, that olive green, the one with probably six accidents over to the left-hand side of the screen. That color green would represent probably one that, accidents that would be preventable from either solution. And then, there's a couple on the Hopewell, coming down the hill on Hopewell, that just were related to ice and water, and nothing would have helped those. So, again, I guess for the benefit of anyone in the audience, this is the distribution of the traffic that we see at the intersection. That would be the morning peak. This is how we adjusted it to account for conditions that we thought might be associated with the construction of Cambridge High School. And then, the afternoon peak. And so, we see a much higher volume and a percentage on that distribution of people coming north on Hopewell and trying to make a left. And so, when we started to look at these various alternatives, this gives you an idea about how they fared both in the current conditions in two thousand and thirteen as well as design conditions in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and thirty-three as we look at increased traffic throughout the area. So, obviously, the no build, the condition that exists today fails currently and continues to fail as we move out through the design year. Unsignalized with the turn lanes also tended to fail in all. And then, all-way, the all-way stop had failing approaches. And so, while some approaches may operate fine, the intersection as a whole failed both in current conditions and design year. So, then, we got down to the final three, the roundabout, the signalized, and the unsignalized continuous green T. And while the continuous green T, which, here's the configuration of that type of intersection, this happens to be one over in, outside the city of Marietta in Cobb County, would work initially, it fails relatively quickly. And so, that's not one that we would recommend moving forward with. So, looking back at the table, what we came down to was an alternative with the roundabout and a more traditionalized, signalized intersection with turn lanes. So, if you look at our public comment that we've been taking over the past month or so, what we've received online so far, we've got ninety-three comments. So far, about fifty-nine percent were in favor of the roundabout, thirty-seven percent in favor of the signal, and then, some folks were just not wanting anything done at this particular location, but represents a relatively small percentage of comments that we received. We also want to take a look, we're a little bit curious about where the comments came from. So, we mapped out where the addresses were for the comments, where we had addressed locations. And while they were a little bit everywhere, including Alpharetta and Cherokee County, you can see that the predominant number of comments came from people that lived on the north side of town, which to us would indicate that people who use that intersection quite frequently and would have a stake in any improvement that we put out there.
Carter, could you go back for a second?
Yeah.
The color of the dots.
The color of the dots would correspond to what their preferred alternative was.
And what was the color of meaning again?
So, the red.
We don't see this black and white on this, so I can't.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, sorry. The red is the signalized. The green is the roundabout. And there's probably a couple of black dots on there which would be the other.
Okay.
So, it may be in that other category, either one or no build.
Question.
Yes, sir.
On the southbound Hopewell lane, kind of downgrade, and it sounds like some of the accidents were due to wet or icy conditions. What you do to help minimize skidding, sliding? Would you put rumble strips in there or some type of?
Probably would not do that on that type of approach. One of the things that we'll talk about when we get to the roundabout alternative is, I think we've got probably a better opportunity with that alternative to start reducing speeds further up the hill with that alternative. If we start back up towards the church and begin reducing speeds as we get to the roundabout, I think that, from an operational standpoint, works a little bit better as well as a permit standpoint in trying to deal with GDOT and the Department of Public Safety and getting our speeds reduced through that area. I think one of the problems that you'll see with the signalized alternative is that as you come around that corner and you have a green light, there's really not going to be any incentive for you to slow down, and in fact, you may have a tendency to speed up because you want to try and make that green light. The roundabout, you don't really have an alternative. You've got to slow down. So, that probably gives us a little bit more opportunity up the hill just to try and start to begin to reduce those speeds coming down there.
And just as an aside, too, I heard comments from the Hopewell Baptist Church that is up there, and they do have a concern with speed as well. And if we have a method to start reducing speed around there, I know that would make them happy also.
I think that's one of the things that we would look at through the final design is if that were one of alternatives. And I say that, but we would probably look at it with either alternative just because of that approach. I just think that we may have an opportunity to be more successful with it with the roundabout. But through the final design process, we would probably look at how far back that would go, whether or not it made it all the way up to the church or past the church. Would just have to be something that we would look at. It's not something that we've done through the concept stage. Okay, so, the, looking at the two alternatives that really, from an operational standpoint, seemed to work in this particular location, we've got the roundabout. And when we looked at the roundabout, at the more traditional single-lane roundabout early on in this process, it actually didn't work. It worked early on, but tended to fail out in the five to ten-year timeframe. And so, we had to make some modifications to the roundabout, which makes it a little bit more complicated. But in order for it to work, what we've had to do is we added an eastbound, what we refer to as a slip lane. So, the right turn movement coming eastbound on Birmingham Road would not even enter the roundabout. It would have a free-flow movement around the roundabout, and then would merge back with traffic south of the roundabout location. On the northbound Hopewell leg, we had to add an additional entry lane. So, you've got a dual entry on that northbound approach on Hopewell. One of those lanes would be a through lane that would continue on through the intersection. The other lane would be a left turn lane that would come around the roundabout and head out westbound on Birmingham Road. Both of these alternatives, I wanted to point out, too, do account for construction up at the Hopewell House that we've discussed in the past and the development of that site. So, both of these alternatives, we looked real hard at the location of that and the sight distance and the access with the properties across the street. And so, the location of that drive is probably in the best location as it's shown on here, although it may have a tendency to move as we get into final design. That's probably where we'll see it, as well as the D cell lanes and left turn lanes associated with the development of that site. What we do with the drive once we get on site, what you see on this particular layout is really conceptual. We'll deal with how we get that drive on site as part of that overall Hopewell property project.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Had you considered changing that driveway and curb cut to come in off of Birmingham Road?
We did. We looked at that and, well, one, it would require us to be on the adjacent property owner, and how receptive they would be, I don't know. But it would require us to go back to the adjacent property owner to have the driveway entry on that property to get enough separation from either intersection alternative to make that viable. And then, the grades moving up the site were relatively steep. And so, we did look at that early on, but we felt like we could make the location as it's shown on here work, and it was probably easier for everybody involved. And then, the other alternative was the traffic signal with the turn lane alternative. So, probably the more traditional intersection that everybody is used to, right turn lanes on the southbound approach, left turns on the northbound approach, and additional right turn on the eastbound approach down Birmingham Road. So, one of the things when we start going through these, we start looking at and looking for those components of the project that may make one stand out above the other, since they're both operationally okay, we start looking at the other components associated with it. And they're going to be different in each project. So, from site to site, we looked at the same thing when we did the Hopewell Francis Cogburn intersection, and obviously, that was different and had its own set of circumstances. But when we looked at the right-of-way acquisition required. But when we looked at the right-of-way acquisition required for the two different projects, you can see on this, on the screen, the right-of-way required for the roundabout is in red, and the right-of-way required for the traffic signal is in green. And in this particular case, because we skew it to the, to the west to try and avoid some utility conflicts that exist on the east side of Hopewell Road, we've got some substantial right-of-way requirements for the roundabout. So we're looking at, and I say substantial, and it's all relative, it's 28,000 square feet of right-of-way that's going to be required for the roundabout, as opposed to 6,850 square feet for the, for the traffic signal. And I think as you'll see typically with the signal, the right-of-way requirements tend to be stretched out over the project because of the installation of the turn lanes. Whereas the roundabout, the right-of-way requirements are typically more localized right at the intersection where you've got most of the land disturbance occurring, and that's really what we see here too. Obviously, one of those projects or one of those properties belongs to the city. I think there are eight properties involved in one way or another with right-of-way acquisition. This does not include temporary and/or permanent easements that would be required for grading, that could be outside of these right-of-way requirements. So all of that would be in addition to, and would probably be similar, more required for the roundabout than for the right-of-way, or, I'm sorry, for the traffic signal.
Carter?
Yes, sir.
On the roundabout, the part of the right-of-way, does require a lot more right-of-way. Does that also create the potential for additional damages to property in terms of accessibility? Those types of things as opposed to just the, the traditional intersection? I know there's damages in terms of, you know, landscaping and those types of things, but as far as accessibility, remaining parcel size, those types of things, was that looked into?
Well, with any of the intersection alternatives, there's going to be a restriction on access.
Sure.
So, we're going to be back a little bit further.
We're, we're a part of that because of what you did with the Hopewell House.
Yeah.
And moving the entrance down, a much better location. But they, I, you know, I've seen that to the point where, you know, you damage a parcel to the point where you have to take an entire parcel as opposed to just a parcel table.
That's right, and I think when you look at that southwest corner, it's a larger tract. Those, those issues will be evaluated once we get into final design. We have not looked at those yet. I think you would run into that is if you, if you needed all the high land on the property and what was left was more difficult to build or undesirable to build on. I don't know that that's the case in this particular piece. We have looked at it from an environmental standpoint and the impact of our intersection, and it is relatively high over there. But once we get to a final design, we'll look at the total impact of the preferred alternative to see what potential impact is.
When you're looking at potential, you know, preliminary costs and things like that, trying to assign costs, I saw your, you know, right-of-way acquisition cost. And construction costs, and I assume your construction costs includes your right-of-way acquisition cost?
Yes, we do have, we've got right-of-way. Does not include right-of-way? Okay, this one does not include right-of-way and, and the cost that we'll look at here in just a second.
Right, I'm kind of-
You know, we're looking, typically, I think what we've seen in, in that area, what we saw with the other intersections, somewhere around 60,000 an acre is where we would probably look to begin. So if that gives you an idea about the additional costs that would be associated with this, less than half an acre with the, with the roundabout.
Right. So in the area of that one large segment, sector, where you're taking that, say for the right-of-way, that involves just a single parcel?
That's right.
Yeah, so that does make it better where you're not dealing with a lot of fragmented parcels, so.
Understand, a good portion of it, of that parcel's in the floodplain too.
Yes, the overall parcel, that's correct. But we don't get down in there.
No, I guess my point is-
Yeah, we did a preliminary evaluation.
Yes, my point is, the usable portion of the property would be right at the intersection on a high corner.
Could be, yes, sir. Yeah.
What's the right-of-way width on Birmingham Road?
60? You know off the top of your head, Ron?
Ah, the old scale?
Yeah, typically, we're running 50 to 60 feet.
60, probably.
We've got a few roads like Hopewell, the farm-to-market roads, they're 80 feet, but most of what we've got are 50 to 60. You made it 60? 60 feet.
So what you're showing here in the red area is that area outside?
That's correct. Additional right-of-way, that would be required for the two alternatives. So, the construction costs, one of the other things that we look at with these various alternatives, signal, we're looking in the neighborhood of about $750,000 versus the roundabout. Because it's skewed in the additional work necessary to install that, we're looking at about $950,000. Again, these are initial construction cost estimates. They don't necessarily include long-term maintenance, operational cost, power that would be required. I think in either alternative, we'll probably like the approaches to it. The, the traffic signal will have power costs associated with running the signal itself, or it wouldn't have that cost with the roundabout. Not that that, that's a huge expense, but that does play into it. Maintenance costs associated with the signal. I don't have the opportunity to have any of my guys out there at 2:00 in the morning with the roundabout like I would with the signal if that goes down or have any type of accident or storm-related issues. So from an operational standpoint, it's a little bit simpler on the roundabout, but a little bit more costly in this particular installation on the initial upfront cost.
Well, further to your point on the signalized, or the signal, is there any data out there on the reliability factor of signalized intersections? And that's kind of an intangible-
Yeah.
-cost or effect that you really can't quantify.
Yeah, that's right.
But what it relates to is traffic backups during peak hours most of the time.
That's right. I'll say, our experience with the current signals that we have, because they're all relatively new, is that they, I don't know, we may get an average of one to two middle-of-the-night callouts per signal. You know, some more than others. What we generally have, accidents, an accident takes out a controller cabinet, for instance, and that puts the whole signal down. And that's probably what we've seen more of recently. But as our equipment begins to age, you know, all of that will come into play and will probably have a higher frequency of service calls.
Power outage too, when they-
Power outages.
Calls just going to go into, you know, flashing mode or a wigged-out mode.
That's right.
Like to say where everyone's sitting there wondering, you know, who goes next with the signal. You won't have that problem with the roundabout, so.
That's right.
Carter, a question as well. I quickly read through all these comments, if you're not.
You weren't listening?
But I was listening to, I was listening to. But I had a, you know, one, one thing I hadn't thought of as well is, there's one here that says that people that had roundabouts in states in the United States, some of them were trying to get rid of them.
Yeah.
You know, and that's something to be, to ask why. You know, like, this particular comment was talking about something in New Jersey where they were getting rid of the roundabouts that they had.
Yeah.
What is the history behind that or the story behind that?
Well, you never know on each particular one. It's going to be a little bit different. I think what we've seen over the years is that the geometry and the design of these roundabouts has changed tremendously. So, you know, that particular one could be an older design, didn't function, could have been a change in traffic patterns, traffic volumes. It's difficult to say, but, but I will say that the general consensus is that as these roundabouts have evolved over the years and with an experience with ones that have failed and experiences with ones that have succeeded, that the design has gotten to the point that, that they're pretty efficient and pretty effective. And I think the design changes that have occurred over the past few years, and they're continuing to evolve even as we go through these processes, that they've addressed a lot of the issues that you saw on older traffic circles. It's, it would be just impossible to say why one particular one failed without knowing any additional background information on it.
And there's no way to determine why they didn't decide to just upgrade their current roundabout rather than switch to a traffic light?
Oh, yeah, that's right. I mean, you could have right-of-way restrictions, environmental restrictions. There's any number of reasons that could have prevented them from either upgrading the roundabout or, or moving. It's probably a more rare case that they're taking roundabouts out and going as traffic signals than, than the other way around.
The other way around. With that being said too, if we do do the roundabout, and obviously, we talked about the amount of flow going through this intersection now, but having lived up in that area since 2003, the, the flow in that intersection has increased exponentially, you know, so, so much in, in just a short amount of time, really in nine years, 10 years. How do we know that we may not have to redo this intersection with higher volume at a certain amount of time?
Well, that's one of the things that we look at. The table that we had presented.
Maybe I wasn't listening as close as I-
When we looked at the alternatives, we, we tend to model it under current conditions, the 2013 conditions, which are the traffic counts that we got last year. And then we look out at 2023 and 2033 with a growth factor associated with those volumes.
Same volumes, okay.
So we look at, what do we have on this, 3% to 4%? 2% to 2%? Probably around a growth of about 2%, which is, we try to look at historical counts throughout the city. GDOT runs some count stations, some long-term count stations that we can see what the growth over the years has been. And we're starting to do the same thing to get some of that data.
And either, and either approach with what you're saying here is going to be acceptable for the next 20 years?
That's right. And it was those future years where we had to start adding those additional lanes in the roundabout alternative because of that traffic growth.
Talking about the slip lanes?
That's correct.
Okay, so we would not put those in initially?
Well, I think our recommendation would be that we would put them in initially. You'd probably have about five to seven years' worth of life if you went with a traditional single lane roundabout. And in fact, the eastbound slip lane on Birmingham would, would definitely be necessary. So you'd be looking at that additional approach lane on Hopewell northbound that, yeah, if we wanted to put it off for five to seven years, we could. But I, I don't know that there's value in doing that.
No, I'd prefer to do a go-all-in way.
By the time we get done with it, we'd be starting to plan to put, put that lane in, so.
Also, I ventured to believe, especially older people like me and Mr. Lusk here.
Wait a minute.
Me, he's a young man. That a lot of times hear roundabout and they confuse it with the term "traffic circle", which older people remember, there were two crazy things in Washington DC was the government and the traffic circles that they had. They had jokes of people, you know, got into traffic circles and never got out. Or lost them. And as Carter said, the, the design standards, the way these things are being done are much different. And I think a lot of people do, when they heard a roundabout, they think of the old traffic circles. I was pretty young at the time, but I do remember trying to negotiate those while I was sitting in the backseat, asking when we're going to be there, but anyway, so.
Okay, again, I think we talked about this a little bit earlier when we were looking at the comparison of the two capacity operational, from an operational standpoint, they're pretty comparable. The signal will have a smaller footprint. In other words, the right-of-way required to install the traffic signal is, is less than the roundabout in this particular location. The traffic signal is probably a little bit easier and faster to construct. Probably somewhere in the neighborhood of four to six months on the traffic signal and six to nine months on the roundabout. We did do the signal at Bethany Bend and Cogburn in a couple of months this summer, but under ideal conditions and ideal contractor. So, I'm not sure that would be the best one to gauge it off of, but probably somewhere four to six month timeframe for the signal. Roundabout, as we discussed, has a little bit lower lifecycle costs, a little bit greener, both from an environmental standpoint and literally greener. Lower speeds, has opportunity to drop the speeds coming down there. Reduce speeds as you really kind of basically enter the whole Milton area. And the reduction in delays, you just don't have that stop condition in the roundabout that you would with the traffic signal. And then we talked about this earlier. This is a diagram that talks about those conflict points. And so, when you look at a traditional intersection there on the left, the number of potential accident conflict points versus the roundabout, significantly more with a traditional intersection, and the potential for significantly higher speeds and much greater property damage and potential for injury at some of those locations, particularly anybody making a left-hand turn, which is a pre-predominant movement at this particular location. And then, finally, just really kind of our typical schedule. This year, we have budgeted the ability to move into final design on this location and right-of-way acquisition, which would position us for moving into fiscal year 14 for construction. So we would look to, for design and acquisition through the rest of this year, and then move into construction. And this particular slide indicates a 12-month construction, but probably a little bit less with the signal, and somewhere around nine months with the roundabout. And that's it. Okay, any other questions?
Bill? On your comparison table here, you say the signal has a smaller project footprint. You're talking specifically about this project, right?
That's right.
Typically, roundabouts have approximately the same footprint as a signalized intersection.
That's right, it was almost exactly even when we looked at the Hopewell Francis Cogburn intersection.
Right, right.
This one, because we're skewing it to the west, the roundabout tends to have a much larger footprint on this one. But again, in relative terms. You know, even with the larger right-of-way, that's roundabout half acre worth of right-of-way acquisition.
Anybody else on council have any questions?
Quick, yeah.
To the next item, please.
And I'll kind of break protocol a little bit. We've got a lot of folks here that, I think, were interested in this. So, you know, give you another chance. If there's any questions from the audience or comments you guys want to make, feel free to step up. You could fill out a card afterwards. If there's any questions that you might have had that didn't get answered, feel free to ask or give a comment card, and we can, we can always email you back or get in touch. So, I don't want to let anybody leave here without kind of getting an idea of, you know, getting their answers, their questions answered, so.
And I'll add that if anybody wants to make any comments online, we'll leave that open through this all the way up until final design process. So we'll continue to make comments. More than happy to take calls or emails if anybody wants to contact myself or Sarah Leeder's regarding this project. We'd be happy to talk to anybody regarding the specifics.
Okay, so I'll just leave that open if anybody in the audience has, has anything they want to add. If not, we'll have the city clerk call the next item.
The next item is discussion of Milton Branding and signage project. Mr. Jason Wright.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you do that.
Geez, Joe, how much did you have?
I have to scrape them off.
Hey, I'm sorry about the age comment. I lost, lost it for a second.
I could have said something, but I'm sorry.
Oh, I know that. Yeah. Talk to Mr. Smiley down there.
Okay, hey, how's everybody doing?
Hey. Oh, we're wonderful.
So I am here. For everybody in the audience, my name is Jason Wright. I'm the communications manager. What you're seeing is actually the third in a series of logo studies that we're doing. So this is the third iteration, which we've been going back and forth on. So when we last talked, this is the one that I had presented that everyone seemed to like the best. However, I was asked to shrink the horse and make the Milton larger, get rid of the Georgia there at the bottom, bring back multiple shades of brown to see how they look, because I want to keep us with the brown that we've been moving towards. And I think that's a good color as far as the, you know, equestrian, earthy feel. Okay, so these are light browns. You can't really see it on the screen because it washes all the colors out. But you see the top one is actually the current logo color. That's Pantone 730. The rest of these are CMYK colors. Those are just different color processes. CMYK is cyan, magenta, yellow, and black. And Pantone is a proprietary system, you know, your classic swatches that you use. Like I said, that Pantone 730 is what the Little Horse logo actually is right now. It's a little bit orangish brown. And then what you're going to see the rest of the time are CMYK. To tell you the truth, I actually like the Pantone 730 the best. I like it because it's got a lot of orange in it, which I think works with the black logo, and I think that it pops pretty well. You can also see that on these logos, I have shrunk the horse down. I got rid of the Georgia at the bottom. And I have the tagline up there on top, "The home of the best quality of life in Georgia" and "The established December 1st, 2006." The next page is just mid-tone browns. And then the last page is dark browns. And as you see, as we get darker and darker on that brown, it starts to really fade into the black and you can't really tell which is brown and which is black. But I don't really have very much of a long presentation because, you know, we're pretty far along in the process at this point. I just wanted to make sure that you guys like the size of the horse, what I've done to make Milton so much larger. Got rid of that Georgia, you know. So there we are. And like I said, I like that Pantone 730 the best. That would probably be my choice. And I like also that it's not, you know, it's another element of the logo that we had before, so we're not completely breaking off from everything we've had.
Question, why are you, why are you using the horse? There's probably some people in this audience would rather see a motorcycle on there.
What if I had a horse riding a motorcycle?
What Pantone color would be? You okay with that, Mr. Shan? Put a motorcycle on it?
Are there any questions or anything? And I also wanted to, some of you already know because you're members of the Milton Business Alliance, but I've also worked with them on their new member brochure. And so what I did was, I actually took one of the horses that I ended up not using and I used the, remember how when we were going through the whole presentation, I was talking about how Trajan, which is what Milton is, that font is for governments and, you know, legal excellence and things like that. And then Arial, which is the font on the top, which is that "home of the best quality of life in Georgia", that's a more modern font that you would generally use with a business to show that you're, you know, with it and a clean-running business. So I worked with them and created a new logo that's, if we're going to be brown, they're going to be green. And that uses that Arial font, so it's the same font, and uses one of the same horses so that they kind of fit together so it looks as though we both underwent, you know, a big branding study together and worked together on that. And I actually just sent them the last iteration of that pamphlet today with some new photos.
For sure, I know graphics stuff to put in there. And I know the Milton Business Alliance includes businesses that aren't in Milton as well. But if we feature any type of business in those brochures, you know, more prominently, I'd like to make sure it's a Milton business.
Absolutely. And that's actually Tom Hobbie and Lauren Holmes. Today, they sent me photos because they had given me a list of the businesses that were members that they wanted me to feature. And there was a problem with Providence Bank because technically it is in Alpharetta. And it was, you know, I used it on a big picture in the back. So what we did was, they sent me some different photos that they liked, and then I broke that up into three smaller photos. So we have like where Vintage Pizza is, we have, they're actually on Crab Apple, but we have Vintage Pizza. We have the really nice facade of the new Orbitalist buildings in Crab Apple there, like where the old blind dog is and stuff. And the third one was, oh, I think Crab Apple Dental, right there. A nice, looking down, that kind of neo-classic, classicism of Crab Apple Dental.
Now, what you've come up with here, initially, we'll use on letterhead.
Yeah, I mean, to, you know, we're going to roll it out. We'll get it started getting it printed on shirts. We'll put it on the letterhead. And the nice thing is, because we have all the logo files and I've created everything, you know, regardless of what format it's going to go on, I can subtly manipulate it to fit on whatever format that we need. So that could be, you know, if it just needs to go on a shirt, maybe it doesn't need the "home of the best quality of life in Georgia", you know what I mean? Maybe it doesn't need "The established December 1st". It can just be that Milton with the horse, and I can shrink the horse down just a little bit to get it to fit, because the tagger's not on top. But yeah, I plan on this being a kind of full-service logo and it's ready to go.
Have you carried it to the next step, for example, entry signage for the city?
Well, I mean, once we all agree on that, it's just a raw Illustrator file. So I would work with the sign company, because basically what's going to happen is, they would probably design the signs since they know the best way and they probably have some sort of, you know, proprietary software system that I don't have to, that they use for like, you know, cutting the signs and stuff like that. But probably they or I can get that Illustrator file into something that they can use in their software.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is the actual signage, background colors, shapes of the signage, sizes of signage. And I would assume we'd use the same thing for our wayfinding signage for parks, firehouse, city hall.
Yeah, absolutely. This is simply the first step. Once we agree on this, we agree on the font, the basic color for, on white, you know, and what we want it to be, absolutely. Then we're going to work with, as we move forward, with the sign companies and, because a lot of that with like wooden signs, you know, we might, suffice it to say, this is just the first step in the process. Everything is going to be, especially now that Mr. O'Connor is on staff, too. I like to work with him and get his ideas as far as how we can brand a sense of, you know, place. I think we do a very good job of that with the four-board equestrian fence. So we just need to create a sign that goes with that, which is obviously what has been done with the, you know, some of the things that we've seen that I think that was the designer review board had worked on. So it's just the first step. This is just baby steps. And then we'll go forward with this whole brand idea as we move forward.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you'd given any thought going to the next step and all that.
Once you guys, once we all agree and we're good with the logo and we're good to go, then I do plan on, yeah, rolling it out.
Good job.
Do a sample in neon, see how it looks.
Just a big blinking neon sign.
Assistant city manager, what is the approval process as far as this? Is this something that comes to us as a final decision? I'm just curious.
It's probably in your typical.
You're on the spot there, but you're here. The other guy is not sitting down there.
Probably however we want to do it, right, Stacy?
I would think so. I think it would definitely need to be something that would be formally approved by the council, especially since all of you aren't here.
Yeah, and one thing, you know, we've talked about, we want to let everybody get a peek at this stuff, too, before we make the decision on it.
But you guys like what you see and we're moving in the right direction, though?
Yeah. Good work. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay, if we can move on to the next item.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'll call that a discussion on the Milton Sign Code for Birmingham Crossroads. And Councilmember Coon.
Yeah, this, I was kind of surprised this came up as it was, but what's been going on, obviously, Birmingham Crossroads is in my district. And I'm there, gosh, between four and, you know, seven days a week to do business, from shopping at the Publix to having my dog washed, to pizza today for lunch, or, you know, Subway, or shipping something to UPS stores, all there. But they've got 30,000 square feet of unused space in that area. And part of the challenges and what I'm hearing from, I've actually heard from 11 different businesses there about exactly how do we bring more business into that area. And of course, the sign code was one of the things they were talking about. Now granted, they've already fixed the sign code in a lot of different ways. And many of the things that they were asking for, I don't think they necessarily realized that, though we elevated that sign code to a certain level to give them more availability to what they can do, they didn't realize that they can bring that up or how to do that. And so I've been in discussions with Andy McHarg, who's the property owner there, property manager there, to help them realize that we are trying to work with them as a property. The next question, though, is, you know, what else do they need to fill out those 30,000 square feet of vacancy that they have? So we've put it to them, just so everybody knows that, you know, tell us what it is that you're looking for. They are now, I'll actually go back. Andy has been working with a sign guy because I don't understand all the details when it comes to signs, but what is possible, one, to make sure that they are now using everything that they can do with what they have, but also is there a way that they can try to attract more business in the spirit of the current construction design of the place, but also to, you know, maybe things need to be looked at again from a size component or whatever. So they are going to be bringing that to us and they should have that to us before the month is out. So that's basically what's been going on. One other question that we might need to review again, though, as well, is neon signs within that area. There are a couple of people that have some in there and they have them hanging in the windows and they're turned off. And quite honestly, it looks horrible to have an unused neon sign in a window. And some of them, law of unintended consequences, are actually hanging flags out front that look worse than if they had a neon sign open or on. So we need to review that again, I think, and I'd love to put that back through, just to have that discussion. You know, maybe there's a way we can make sure they're small or whatever, but something that makes sense internally within the Birmingham Crossroads area. But that's basically it. We've got, you know, fortunately, I think the property manager is looking forward to asking what they can do within the spirit of the current design. I don't know what he's going to bring to us. You know, that's strictly up to them. But when they do, I think that we should definitely consider all options there. At least we're starting that conversation. And that's a good thing, you know, again, because having the 30,000 square feet of unused space doesn't do anybody any good. Right now, if businesses are looking at moving into the Birmingham Crossroads and they're asking the Milton Business Alliance if they should, the Milton Business Alliance is having a very difficult time recommending that someone should move into Birmingham Crossroads. So we, you know, being in that area, I'd love to see that area thrive. I want to see it stay within the spirit of the current design that we have. But I think that we've got some positive steps going forward and discussions that I'm curious to see how it's going to play out. So, and right now, I don't know the answer of what they're going to ask for, but we will know soon enough what it is that they're, what they're bringing. And, you know, that's basically it.
Okay, and I appreciate your work on that. As you know, Matt, I met with Andy and our staff about two years ago to bring us ideas which might help. And unfortunately, we didn't get any, but I had met with a lot of tenants, too. The signage is an important issue, but I guess we all have to realize, too, that's not the only, you know, if you allow bigger signs, I know that for a while, the Publix was saying, "Well, we're not doing well because we don't have bigger signs." And unfortunately, there's a lot of things that play, you know, it's the demographics, too. And so we can't blame it all on the city or regulations and signs. Obviously, we want to work with them, but, you know, when they opened up, they had very high rents and demographics may not have been there. So, you know, hopefully, it'll all work out because we all want to see it thrive. But we have to keep in mind that just putting up bigger signs may not, you know, there may not be the people there to support it like that. So I'd just say we have to keep all that in mind. There's several factors why it's partially empty. Okay, any questions or comments? All right, we'll go to item number four, discussion regarding revisions to the Regulation of Solid Waste Collection Services Ordinance. Cindy E. is going to present that to us.
Well, good evening. I wanted to give you a little bit of background. I started to work with Matt Marietta about a year ago in taking a look at the solid waste ordinance. It was something that Milton Goes Green had a strong interest in trying to button up and make some of the things that we're doing a little more accountable. So Matt and I spoke about it and I ended up taking over the job in January to try to get a handle on what our haulers are doing, what we're doing in terms of collections, our municipal solid waste tonnage versus our recycling tonnage. And so basically, we're at the point now that we need to reapprove our annual contract for solid waste. And in doing so, I have come up with some suggestions with the help of some of the MGG people and staff as well that will tend to streamline some of the procedures that we've had for solid waste. It will also put all of the haulers, hopefully, on an even playing field because we haven't been collecting, we haven't had a good way to really enforce our ordinance, a good system in place, I should say. So we want to make sure that everybody is treated equally and fairly and that everyone that is hauling in this area is in compliance with our ordinance, which hasn't been the case up until now. So basically, I wanted to come before you tonight so that if there was any questions or any discussion that you'd like to have, it'll give you an opportunity to do that before we actually have that first reading, which will be next Monday. So just to give you an idea of the changes, some of those are very minor changes that are just really typo errors. Page one of the redlined ordinance, just a spelling change there with establishing. Going over to page six, we found that there was a duplication of a couple of sections in the collection of fees. And I think what happened is when we wrote this solid waste ordinance, I was part of the committee, the TARA committee, and the consultants were pretty much cutting and pasting from a lot of different ordinances throughout the city. And I think they just duplicated it, but there's really, you know, no reason to keep both of those in. So we were looking at deleting section 46-3, the collection of fees, and referring everything to another section, 4670, which is on page 13, which is more specific about how we charge our infrastructure maintenance fee. It's called the contract and rental fee area. So we're just taking out that one section, which doesn't really make any sense to keep both of them in, and putting a little note to refer to the fees in section 4670. Then if you go to page 12, we're just changing some verbiage, actually, adding some verbiage to clarify the payment of fees. In talking with some of the haulers, we've identified the fact that they really did not know that the infrastructure maintenance fee was supposed to be paid on commercial hauling as well as residential hauling. The reason being is the trash trucks and even the commercial trash trucks are some of the heaviest vehicles we have on our roads. They can be 70,000 pounds when they're full, and it does cause a lot of wear and tear of the roads. So whether you're a commercial hauler or a residential hauler, the infrastructure fee does pertain to you. So we wanted to clarify that because it wasn't really specific in the ordinance before. Then going on to page 13, I have been spending some time, I'm not going to say it's a lot of time. It kind of comes and goes at the periods of time that we are expecting to get a payment from our haulers, which is November 15th, happens to be the time that we get it for the third quarter. happens to be the, the time that we get it for the, the third quarter. And Honor Moats also has been just great to work with, but she spends a lot of her time in trying to track down this money. So, Stacy and Honor and I decided that it would be prudent to put in a, some kind of a late payment fee, so that it would give haulers an incentive to get that in on time. So, that is, that's listed there. And also, an idea that came out of Johns Creek was our compliance officers really have no way, unless they take a list around with them, knowing which haulers really need to be in Milton or should be in Milton. And up until this point, we have had quite a few rogue haulers that have not, you know, signed up to be a hauler and haven't paid any of the fees. And so, a decal that we would issue once a year, that would be issued after the end of the calendar year, payment and recycling and municipal solid waste figures were turned in, a per, a decal would, would give that company the ability to, to be a hauler in Milton. So, it would help our compliance issues, so that our code enforcement people would know that that, that truck is okay, don't have to stop him, don't have to ask if they're an approved hauler or not. It'll be simple for them to see, probably on the left-hand side of their, of their driver window. So, we just felt that that would be, and it's worked well for Johns Creek, too. As a matter of fact, they use that decal for their taxis and any other vehicles that they're permitting in the city. It's kind of the same permit. It'd be something we could think about for something else. But... So, I have included up there the list of the haulers that we have, and I broke them out. I'm sorry, that formatting kind of got messed up. But, so you can kind of see the residential haulers, the commercial haulers, and the haulers that really have the roll-off tonnage, which are more like temporary roll-off bins for construction debris and equestrian, maybe an equestrian haul or some things. So, those are the haulers that are in our areas. The ones that are in red currently are delinquent with their fees. But we have been working with them, and they're all, they have all been contacted, and they're supposed to be coming into compliance here before we have this voted on in early December. And just to give you an idea of the kind of, the kind of revenue that we generate from the infrastructure maintenance fee, that's on, on that other page. You can look at the totals from last year and so far this year, and it's been fairly consistent over the last few years. But I think, once we communicate with the haulers that the, the fee is supposed to be paid on commercial business as well, we're going to see those numbers go up, because I think they just have overlooked that.
Question?
Okay, yes.
Go ahead. This list here, this is current hauler, right?
Yes, right.
So, if they're a commercial hauler, but they're not on the residential hauler list?
They, they don't pick up residential.
Because they're...
I mean, there could be, they could be on both.
Yeah, I, I just see a hauler here that I know that picks up trash in our neighborhood that's not on the residential hauler list.
Oh, I need to talk with you. That's what we call rogue hauler.
Advanced disposal.
And we have, over the last, really, over the last year, we have found a couple of them, and we've spoken with them. You know, it's like, gee, I didn't realize you had an ordinance. I tried to find it online, and I couldn't find it, those kind of answers. And so, those two haulers actually have paid, or will be paying within the next week or so, so we will put them on the approved list.
Okay.
And they're listed there for you.
Do they typ, do they typically understand, when something's not new to them, that, you know, they need to pay these fees, or?
Well, I think they do understand. It does vary from city to city. So, sometimes they'll, they'll say, gee, it's hard to keep up with everything, because every municipality treats it differently. But I think it's just a communication thing. These companies have personnel that changes. The people that are paying this infrastructure fee might be different than they were last year, and it's just, it's an education process.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, I guess with this list here, you've only identified the ones you're aware of. Do you suspect there's any other renegades out there, like the one that Lance is using?
There sure could be.
I'm not using them. No, but I referred them to you. I sent them to your house.
Well, I mean, I, I happened to walk up to one of the trucks just a couple of weeks ago and spoke with them, and gee, I didn't know that, you need to call so-and-so.
I just drove the truck, lady.
So, so I did. And, you know, I, I try to be pleasant about it and not accusatory or anything like that. And normally, it is just that they either have been hiding from it, or, but they make it sound like they're just really innocent, they just didn't know. So, in both cases, I've asked them if they would pay for the fees to date this year, then we will consider them in compliance, and we'll move ahead, putting them on the list.
Sure. One more question. It's probably not relative to our ordinance here, but an example, several years ago, a company did a project in the city of Duluth. And the way they have it set up is they have two haulers that are approved, I guess on an annual contract basis. And ignorance of the law is no excuse, but when we bid the job, we had a lot of demolition involved with it. And, of course, we took prices upfront, which formed our, our bid price. And when we got in the contract and started demolition, we brought in our own haulers. And the city manager made it extremely clear within about three minutes that we'd either get them off the job, or, and use his haulers, or go to jail. So, we took the better way out, obviously. But...
I was jailed.
Yeah.
I ate three square meals a day.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
Would you see any, I guess the way we had overcome that, if that situation were to come up, at least, for instance, if we're building the public safety building, and the contractor were to use his own hauler, I guess the, the solution to that would, would be for him to have his hauler approved, I guess. But, would they be subject to the, the five percent fee?
Well, they're going to be...
You know, I don't know the answer to your question. On that one...
Did I make it clear enough or not?
No, that was, it was a good enough question. I guess I just don't know that it's, there's a difference between the removal of debris that's part of a construction project versus the weekly hauling of solid waste. So, I guess I'll have to look at the ordinance to see if there's, if there's that difference in the ordinance made. I could tell you, I wouldn't have threatened you with jail.
Would you?
I wouldn't have.
Yeah, I'm sure you could. Worst case, you'd go to them and say, you know, you need to sign up and pay a fee for the, you know, work you're doing in the city.
Well, ultimately, what we did was use their, one of their two approved haulers at their higher rate.
Yeah, that's...
And we absorbed it.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to your question, but before we adopt this at the meeting, we can, I'll, I'll figure that out.
Just thank you, Senator Troy. No, that could happen, you know. And like Cindy said, sometimes people, I mean, you could have a residential, somebody doing a small residential remodel on their house, hire a contractor that's not familiar with Milton, and he just calls his regular, got to send a dumpster out there. And they're not intending to skirt the law or whatever, but, you know.
Well, if they're not doing on contract throughout the city on a regular basis, would they be subject to the same?
That may be part of what...
Franchise fee, yes.
That may be what we need to figure out, is that, as you said, Chris, like if they're on a contract of hauling and all that versus a one-shot deal on a specific construction site.
And I think so often, those things can be cleared up with, you know, a good website. We haven't, you know, been great about keeping that website up to date and making it easily to, easy to understand and find the information. So, if a hauler is doing his job, he should be looking at a city's solid waste ordinance. But I know they, they don't always do that for specific jobs, but...
You have a question?
Yeah, one question. Related to the subject. My wife's Italian from New Jersey, so solid waste hauling is near and dear to the family. The, I talked with Milton Goes Green, some of the folks, and they're trying to organize a hazardous waste disposal day. Is that something that you would be coordinating with them, or?
Yes, absolutely. And that is one of the, the small changes that we're proposing in the, in this ordinance change, too, is the, the fees can be used for a couple of different areas. Mostly, it's going to be infrastructure maintenance, can be litter remove, removal, and then we also added the hazardous waste as a way to potentially fund that. If this first event, which we appreciate you guys being able to fund for us, but if this first event, which will be in February or March, goes well, it's the type of thing that's difficult to stop. Once you do it, oh, when's your next hazardous? That was great, you know, I got rid of a lot of stuff. So, this would be a mechanism to be able to use some of those funds for that.
It's a nice service to offer a community, especially people that got, that are letting it pile up in their, you know, garage, or park, or wanting to bury it in their backyard.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. You know, should we really be involved in that? Unfortunately, there's not a lot of companies that take care of residential hazardous waste. And if they have a service, it's extremely expensive. So, I think from the standpoint of, of people maybe disposing of that improperly...
Right.
We really have to, we have to think about that. We don't want it in the stormwater system.
Right. So, anyway.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Councilor Lust, let me, can I take a shot at your, at your hypothetical?
Sure.
Looking at the code, I mean, it is, it is a little murky, but just looking at the general, some of the preamble and some of the policy considerations behind the code, one thing that, that looks clear is, it looks like the code is focused on commercial and residential customer accounts, because it talks about things like providing recycling services and things of that nature. And so, that doesn't really lend itself to sort of a one-time, you're coming in because I want to contract you to do this, I don't know, commercial demolition project and haul the waste away from that. So, from that perspective, if I was making the argument to you, I don't know that the public policy behind this code really embraces a one-shot dealer, or a one-shot mover of debris that way. The only thing that would lead me to lean the other way is when the code talks about the fact that our rights of way are valuable, and that if you generate money by using our public rights of way and the roads that we've built, therefore, you know, damaging or impacting those roads, you ought to have to, in some way, compensate Milton, because that's a valuable infrastructure that, that, that we provide you. So, from that perspective, you almost could make the argument. I think the better approach, though, is that it would not, at this point, apply in that sort of situation.
Well, I used that argument over there, too, was turning down.
Interesting.
Sure.
Just to give a quick temperature check of the four members of council that are here, just to, we talk through this every year. You know, we have a competitive ordinance that allows for the free market to drive the haulers. There's a model by which we could assign haulers by region, or even give an exclusive contract to a hauler to haul for the entirety of Milton. And every time I bring that up, I usually get, at least in prior years, I've been told, no, we want to remain in this competitive market. Can I just get a temperature check real quick from the council? That's still the move.
That's what I'm going to do.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, good. I just, I figured it was, I just wanted to ask.
Well, it's on the approved list. You know, they're paying their, their fees.
But one of the main points of discussion on that issue is larger number of haulers out there are not all on the same schedule. So, you may have six haulers coming in there, one each day of the week on the same streets. And I think that's been the argument, particularly in some of these subdivisions, that every day of the week, they've got trucks going in and out of their subdivisions.
Well, it is definitely one of the benefits of a single hauler, is that you have one trash day.
Right.
And you know if Tuesday's trash day, it's going to be trash day for the whole neighborhood. And then you don't have to live with it, Wednesday through Monday.
And you get garbage cans or trash cans out on the road every day of the week, too, if you have multiple haulers. I can see the argument.
It tends to be, to go from the type of system we're in to one that is more single vendor-driven, or even regional, region vendor-driven. It seems as though cities that have done that, there's some pretty strong opposition in the front end. Typically, it's received, at least as I've been able to tell, it's received well after some time, and people see it in practice. But you go through a pretty decent period of struggle to get to the, to the blue skies. So, you know, it, it's one of those that if we decide we were ever to want to do that, we'd want to make sure that we did it with a lot of public input and a lot of discussion.
Yeah, I think that would be a learning curve, because from the perception first, it's going to be, haulers are going to be against it because you're eliminating competition. Citizens are going to be against it because they think you're trying to regulate, you know, their haul. In all reality, maybe it would bring the cost down, because like you said, you know, you're getting everybody at one time, you're driving less per, per pickup.
And just to add one, one thing, what you said, Bill, there are some neighborhoods that have gone together and convinced either through their HOA dues to take care of the, the haulers. So, like Crook Creek has one hauler, and a couple of the other ones have kind of banded together to make a, you know, a premier hauler for their area. And they can usually get a better deal from the hauler. So, we do encourage them to do that. It's not going to happen all the time, because people get very passionate about their individual haulers, but...
I understand.
I know, I have six in my neighborhood, so...
RHOA did that, and went with, actually got rid of the one that's not on the list.
Uh huh, okay.
And went with a different one that is on the list. Although, some people are in love with their haul, and they're still using that one that isn't on the list.
I just look forward to it. When he pulls up, and he's really nice, and waves at me, and that's it.
That's right.
Thank you.
I'll talk to Lance.
Okay, sure, that's fine.
Okay. Any more questions for Cindy? Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to our last topic, which is the discussion of two proposed planning studies. Number one, State Route Nine north of Bethany Bend, and two, Arnold Mill from Crywell to the county line, with Kathy Field would present that.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and the council. Yes, I have two proposed planning studies that I'd like to get your guidance and input on. The first essentially has been generated from the discussion that we've had on the form-based code for the Deerfield Route Nine area. And if you remember, that this is the original boundary area for the LCI study. That included also some parcels that were in Alpharetta. And when we came before you to initiate the form-based code, at that time, we proposed a smaller area for the form-based code, i.e. the area that was outlined in the script. We captured the Deerfield area, and then went westward toward Route Nine. We felt that the southern area, of course, was in Alpharetta mostly, and the north area would be captured by the, the Route Nine overlay. When we went to the Stakeholder Committee, two things came out of that committee. The first was that some of the Alpharetta parcels, that we should include the whole study area for the form-based code. When we asked our consultants if it would cost us any more money, they both said no. And we thought that would be the more appropriate way to go, be a much cleaner area. So, just for your information, we're going forward with a form-based code for the whole study area without the Alpharetta parcels. The second item that has come out of the Stakeholder Committee is the issue of fact that when this study area was put together, and as you know, we have to compete with ARC for LCI money, they asked us to, to do it more as an activity center, which means to, rather than as a corridor. So, we ended up with this configuration. The Stakeholder Committee said to us, we've left off the area north of Bethany Bend on Route Nine that goes up to Forsyth County, that that's a sensitive area... Route Nine, and that goes up to Forsyth County, that that's a sensitive area, there's been no planning for it, and hence no, uh, rezoning as part of the Form-Based Code, so we felt that that was a very valid concern, and here is the area, here's Bethany Bend, here's Route Nine, all the way up to the Forsyth County, and this is just a proposed study area, but we would like to get some guidance, um, from you as a council, uh, to allow us to proceed with doing a planning study for this area, and we've proposed, um, an outline of what the boundary could be, but we would certainly review it with the Planning Commission, and then, of course, with the public, but we could do this, we feel, we have the expertise to do this in-house, we would not have to hire any consultants to do this, uh, we would look to do this in the January, February timeframe, um, we would probably do a mini charrette, where we would go to the community, and have those little building blocks that, uh, Councilman Coons likes, um, and sort of come up with what, what the land use for the area should be, we would then bring that through the Planning Commission, and then to the council for your approval. Once we have an approved plan, we can then go and rezone this, and we would use the Form-Based Code, and we would amend the Form-Based Code for the Deerfield area to include this sort of tail, we're referring to this as Route Nine North, but we, we feel it's an important area, and we wanna make sure it's covered, and so, um, uh, with your guidance and recommendations, we would like to, uh, uh, get your input in terms of whether you concur with the fact that we should move forward to do a, uh, in-house planning study to, to bring this into the fold, so...
You going out?
Yeah, there was, I mean, when we did the LCI, there was a, I mean, there were people that wondered why it did not extend on up to the Forsyth County line in the first place, so frankly, I believe it's a good effort to go ahead and, and do something in terms of looking at that area...
I agree.
Uh, to the north, and, uh, plus there's some activity already brewing, you, as you know.
Right, right, and, you know, our goal is to get out ahead of development, so that we have something, we're proactive, we have something in place, so as development happens, we have an approved plan that, uh, the community is acceptable.
Right.
And, uh, just going to, you know, assume, obviously, that this can be, cause we do have a lot of citizens that think the Highway Nine area gets kinda left out, and, you know, just things get put there and all that, I mean, to me, I wanna make sure as long as we're looking at this to, to make the area, uh, better, um, uh, you know, better lifestyle and looks and all that for the Highway Nine area, that, correct, everybody's thinking.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. No, I think in a, in a good sense, cause again, I, you know, there are, there's been a lot of sentiment about, it's the sacrificial lamb for the city, and, uh, although it is a state route, and so it is more conducive to the type of development we're talking about, but putting some thought into that, and putting a pattern, something to that is, I think, important, uh, for us to, to move forward and look at it from a sense of, you know, what the land use and potential land use, those types of things, but also other potential for amenities and things, too, that would help soften that as well.
Okay. Anybody else, Bill?
Yeah, um, I commend you for taking this project on, and understanding the urgency of it, too. Um, I would suggest, and I'm sure I know you'll do it, that we do a real thorough job of notifying everybody up through that corridor, and out, uh, outboard for a certain distance, too, of what's going on, and the fact that we do need their input.
Absolutely.
I don't wanna hear in six months, or after, we get the whole thing, uh, chiseled in stone, that nobody knew about it.
Yeah, we would...
Well, if we have to send, send out registered letters or something like that, put folks on...
And contact all the homeowners associations up there and the businessmen, we, we would certainly do a, uh, a really intensive survey of all the key stakeholders and business owners and HOAs, and anyone we could, um, that, the whole idea is to bring out as many people as we can.
Okay, I just, you know, and my concern, too, is to me, make sure that we communicate, we get the public involved in that, it's, it's, um, communicated that this is a way to enhance the area, not, you know, a way to develop more in the area, but to control what's, what's gonna happen there, and make it, to make it a more appealing, so...
And when we do have these community information meetings, too, perhaps we ought to consider having some of the sessions on the weekend, to make it more convenient for folks to...
Yeah, and I always like to hold them up in the site area, too, so, you know, we'll locate, uh, something up there that, that would be convenient for the people up there, and we'll do it up there.
Lance's house.
Right, he can do it at my house. I'll throw cookies.
Okay, then you wanna move into the Arnold Mill stuff?
Yes, I mean, um, I, um, okay, I'd like to move on to, to the next one, which is the Arnold Mill Corridor, I don't have a big board for it, but you should all have a map in front of you that shows the, uh, the Arnold Mill area, and there's a, a block of it as well, as you know, our comp plan, and I did include, I think, an Epsom from the comprehensive plan, that talks about, um, doing a master plan for the Arnold Mill Road area, um, we had thought about do, uh, last year, every year, as you know, uh, ARC has a competitive, uh, uh, call for proposals for LCI studies, um, I just come on board last year, and we had approached Roswell to see if they would, um, want to partner with us for this study, because as you can see, um, on the map, that, um, Roswell does, uh, boundary this area in several points, um, Roswell said last year that they were not ready, when we approached them early this year to ask them if they would be willing to partner, they felt that the zoning they had was adequate, and that they would just be interested in acting as a stakeholder, just to protect their area in terms of what they saw their future plans to be. Um, thinking about it more, and talking to ARC, uh, we felt that this corridor may not be as competitive, uh, for the LCI money as, um, other proposals that would be forthcoming from the region, um, but I would tell you that when I was in McDonough, I worked very closely with ARC, with their land use division, Dan Reuter, I know has been before you many times, and he heads that division, and they're a very competent group, and I managed to, in McDonough, get the land use division to come down and perform a community charrette, it was a week-long charrette, that ended up with a really very, very excellent plan that we were able to use as we moved forward with the development in McDonough, so I approached ARC with a proposal to do a similar type of initiative for us in Milton, and I have succeeded in getting them to provide that type of manpower to come up, and at a very minimal cost, um, we would have to provide lunch, we would have to provide a space all week for them to, to meet, and have individual stakeholder meetings, and then have a space for two community meetings, um, I would also have to provide for a professional illustrator, because as you talk about these things, you, it's important that we have someone that can illustrate, um, the type of development, activity center, or housing, whatever it is that we're talking about, that could be used as part of the presentation, and would be incorporated in the plan, so we're talking about a $5,000 expenditure total, and, um, they would come, they would use their staff, um, our staff would provide all of the background information they needed, all the arrangements that they needed, so between their staff and our staff, I think that we could certainly pull this off for approximately $5,000, as opposed to $120,000, and then the, the thought would be that once the plan was approved, came through the Planning Commission, City Council, we could then, um, move into the idea of implementing it with a Form-Based Code, should that be the direction that you would like to go. Um, I would like to propose that we do this, uh, in later spring, since early spring, we're gonna be doing Route Nine North, but, uh, I suggested to them the March to April timeframe, and, um, then we could certainly, as I say, move, um, into an implementing, I'm concerned because Crab Apple is going so gangbusters, that I really wanna get ahead of any future development, and I wanna make sure we have a plan, we have the adequate zoning in place, so that as development starts to move up that corridor, um, we're ready for it, so I'd like to get your feedback, um, in terms of whether or not this is something that you could support us to move forward on.
I just, I would agree there, I think, especially that area, we need to really, uh, because it, it hasn't had the development, but it's kinda just a hodgepodge now, and, uh, that certainly could be one of our gateways.
I also do it now leads the way, I think, I don't know if anybody else is, is looking at that as much, I'm not sure if we all anticipate that area becoming something to Roswell, down there Alpharetta, too, I mean, it's a great opportunity, if we formulate what we are anticipating doing there now, a lot of everybody else must play catch-up, so, great, great idea.
Well, I think with the, uh, ultimate fore-lining of 140, I think, uh, this is obviously the right time to get involved in that whole corridor, and plan it right, before we get a bunch of development up there that's not suited to that whole corridor, so, you can't beat the price, you know?
Yeah, in light of what Cherokee, you know, they've got a lot of plans for north, uh, along that route there, too, so it's going to drive traffic, you know, that way, and we need to take advantage of that, and plan for that as well, um, so I think it's something, um, and, you know, I guess, and try to, try to coordinate maybe some with Cherokee as far as what their, their plans are.
Yes, and actually, we've talked to Cherokee, they, they are planning an activity center a little further up on their side, and I've talked to Dan Reuter about that, too, and he, he may be considering as a phase, too, is to work with Charity, Cherokee, to, to, to do what he's doing, going to be doing for us, to do that for Cherokee.
Yeah, I saw some of their plans, uh, being, you know, had over there, so...
Okay, all right, um, before we finish up, it's a few folks in the audience, any comments or anything on that, obviously, if we move forward on that type of stuff, there'll be plenty of time, but, if there's any comments, you can all still have a card later, and if not, we'll, uh, conclude this work session, so, and now, what time is it?
Seven forty-five.